Okay.
Um, I don't.
It's just us, Dr. It's not here. Okay. I don't have to do the anything. Official meeting started. Okay, policies today, so I think we definitely wanna start with the personal communication devices. Policy?
Shit from officer, or you wanna have anything up on the screen or just redo it?
I think we're doing easier.
Right back.
Okay, do you want us to wait for you?
Give it just a second.
Okay.
You know, I never created a. Also that was.
So where did you go again Stacy?
We went to Disney.
I thought you went out of the country.
Next week. We're only. There's only two day, Monday and Friday, so.
Yeah.
And that was kinda late. Late minutes.
Got it.
We're going to Mexico and.
Oh, okay.
Saturday or. Eight o'clock. It's uh Christmas with the cranks. Have you seen that? They they go on vacation at Christmas, we just go ahead. And then it backfired. We we're usually gone, it's good mostly goes somewhere.
So she has not to play with the play within one thousand and Saturday.
So she but she won their last heart, so.
Okay. So starting with personal communication devices, I know we've all talked about this a million times. But um. Let's talk about it one more time. I think we're kind of were all in agreement on. A lot of. Well, several of the items, um. I went through this again. And. I think for the most part, it winds up pretty well with what. I know was the policy last year at high school. Um, which I think we all kind of were in agreement to keep it that way. Um. I know we talked about removing or editing the snitch clause. Uh, which is on page two, like the third sentence out from the bottom. Um, a person who discovers a student using a P C D and violation of this policy is required to report the violation to the building principal. Um. I don't know if we still feel like we wanna take that out, if we wanna edit it to say. A staff member. I I. Think the argument was just.
I have a lot of issues with the second half of this policy.
Yeah.
And my general thought is. We say a lot of words that say nothing, and so all these paragraphs just need to be removed.
Okay.
Um. The snitch clause being one of them.
Yeah.
Um, because. It says that violations required to report, there's no. What does any of that mean?
Right.
I mean, who reports, who violates, who offers discipline, who, what's the levels of discipline? I mean, and maybe that ties in with other policies, but none of that stated here, so.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of a. I I I just think it adds no value to the policy. And I think it's actually bad form for the students. Beginn. So that's my thoughts.
I get it. Do you think, cause when I was reading this, it's it. You know, some of our policies writers that like overarching, there's my word again. And this seems to get really in the nitty gritty, and I think the only thing that we. This policy really is for is. Kind of shutting down the use of cell phones during instructional time.
Yeah.
So.
And I think that the that paragraph is on the first page. I think it's fine.
Yeah.
But then I, the second paragraph where it talks about. Uh, are the paragraphs under that, no expectation of confidentiality, I mean, I don't see how we have that in the policy.
Yeah, and I wanna say that.
There's no legal.
Student handbook has.
Yeah.
Their own little policy. So to me, I feel like that's.
That's line be struck. Um, then the the last paragraph on the first page, I think that's a reasonable, talking about how they're not to be used to bully basically. But then let me talk about. Um. Students are prohibited from using this first, first new paragraph on the second page. Basically are prohibited from using the cheap, well, they can't have them. I mean, it's redundant. Okay, whatever, take it out. Uh. I I like the possession of the cell phones as a privilege, so then the following paragraph I think is good. But then we go into the violation one, and it just seems to be a. Something that we would clearly lose in any legal proceeding. So I would kinda remove all of that. I'd remove the uh. The snitch clause and then the uh. Students, I I don't know how we put in the board assumes no responsibility of theft, loss, or damage, I mean. I guess that covers our butt, but I don't know that that's. That even adds value.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like that would be in the student handbook.
Yeah.
One, right, cause we're not physically.
So that's kinda where I'm at. But I don't know where the rest of the board's.
Well, I think going back to. That the. Second to last paragraph, uh, when it came to the board liability or responsibility. Why is? What responsibility would we have if somebody loses?
Well, I can tell you as building principal, um, you know, if theft occurs, if somebody steals. You know, the kid left their phones. For example, I was at test, so they would leave their phones, we had a student left their phone on the stage while they went and. Participate in P E, well, there's the phone came up missing. Well, you should have had your phone to begin with. And just like a wallet or anything else, you just don't need your personal property app, and so I. So we wanted to make sure, and the parent was upset that we said, you know, we're not responsible for that, because that's not. And so I think that that goes along. To me, that's I actually, that's protection, just to put it in state that stating that. It's and it's not just. P D As, I mean, it's everything, I mean.
Yeah, but why would would this be any different than a a sweatshirt?
You're correct, but I think that um, the difference between this and a sweatshirt, a sweatshirt is not a thousand dollars and. P D A is.
Oh, that gets very much in the thing you got.
Then yeah, that's a different legal.
Thousand dollar fun, you know. But that's that story, I just, I, like you, John, I'm just not. Uh. I don't think that that's that. Specifically is necessary, because I can tell you right now, you know. As an investigator, you tell me that. Your child's phone was stolen at school or your wallet was stolen at school, my first response, my first question is, why was it left and why was it left? That does not fall on the janitor, doesn't fall on the teacher, doesn't fall on the building principal, anybody else, that falls upon. Uh, the responsibility of your son or daughter, and so. There there lies the legal out at that point, so.
Now, I think we did get in trouble when we start collecting phones. And then if something would happen.
That's a different story.
Do, I know the high school policy. They can confisc confiscate it, right, and then. The teachers have a thing on their desk, they can take it and report them. Take it down, but yeah, that's.
And then I think we would have liability.
There would be something with that.
So this, I know, I don't think.
Unless you're confiscating it, you keep it in a secure place, like fiber, take your phone right now, John. Uh, I'm taking it and I'm gonna put it in a locker that only one person has access to. So therefore it would keep it from, you know, it's sitting on my desk or in the drawer in my office or anything else, somebody coming in and taking it. So there's gotta be that, but. Yeah.
Stacy, what's current practice regarding confiscated?
Well, I can't, you know, I can only speak from my time when I was in the uh. In that walls and as a building administrator, uh, once again, we didn't want our teachers to keep those. And so if they did confiscate something, we. We didn't want them to look at them, we didn't want them to try to open them, nothing, they were to return those into the office immediately, so we can secure them and we get them in our safe room.
Yes. Think I have.
Um, they might, I they. They might have an idea, but they.
Oh, yeah.
They both had, and Miss uh, Mark, who has experience.
Oh, happy, how's it going?
We just wanna get them involved.
You guys can all sit at the table, I think. Would you know you could sit at.
Come up and rather sit, okay.
I don't know where the camera's at, he's got that new camera, it's a travel. I think he's not with in New Jersey too. I I can speak for Dennis, I think test kinda follows the same thing, it progressive discipline, just like anything else, so. During my class period, Dennis, if I see with your phone, I can warn you the first time, hey, but we're not supposed to have that. Second time, I take it from you and keep it at my desk, and you can pick it up when you're way out the door, go on to send you to your next class. And uh, third, he gets taken up to the office, it's a phone call, the parent has to go pick up, I teach there, so it's kinda progressive, I think test follows very nice.
Similar similar procedures.
So high school, I wasn't exactly sure if they take.
Yeah, I just, I pulled it up, they have. Um, I guess signs posted, or they did. Says cell phone policy, why, why to focus on learning, and it's album hall. One warning procedure, two, take your keeps phones, three referrals to office.
Yes.
True, well, keep phone on desk or in a pocket holder. Until in the class period, a referral means students' parents will get on call and phone is kept in office for major.
Yes, so.
And you're saying that, you know, that's some of us, yeah, okay, and and the elementary schools?
Um, I would say it's progressive, I just, we don't have that much trouble with it, so I don't hear of any concerns from principals about we're having a lot of issues with cell phones, this is how we need to handle it. Yeah, it's just they're just not permitted to break them, unless that's part of their I E P or medical condition that they need.
So do you think, are you saying this big paragraph on page two, take that out?
Violations of this policy?
Yeah, violations of this. Well, I mean, I just.
I could scream set of policy board.
I feel like it's addressed elsewhere too. Where else is it addressed? So I see this in the student handbook. Like the little cell phone, it's, I know it is for high school. But may or may not be for. Dennis and test and elementary schools. But also I think this is one of.
I mean, ties talk about law enforcement, and if there are illegal things happening, then we have state law that takes care of all this, I mean. And other policies. Yeah. So why would we kinda have a summary paragraph in this policy that may or may not be exactly correct, or we may or may not be following to the.
Yeah, that's kind of.
When, if, for instance, pornography is found on the phone for however that comes to light. That that was gonna instigate a whole chain of events. It's gonna involve Aaron more than any of us initially. And once again, we don't want our our uh. Administrator to be involved in any kind of investigation of that either, because then.
Yeah, yeah.
It could be liable. So. Is the, oh, is the po- is the cell phone policy, sorry, unclear, but is cell phone policy the same? High school as it is Dennis and test, they seem.
No.
What's the diff- what's the difference?
Hey, the league has adopted a away for the day policy, so it's just not to be out at all. The high school is um, away during instructional time, so not to be out during. Classing time during periods, but during passing periods, lunches, things like that, it's not confiscated if you have it on the hallway, whereas at Dennis, if I have my phone out during a passing period, I can have my phone taken away, cause you're not supposed to have that at all. And as far as that code of conduct does have a cell phone, like that's where like the consequential things come in, and then just the very first thing is just has to be at the discretion of the principals, so.
And that was, and that was decided by the principals.
Right, yeah, they build.
That was a building level.
Right, so when you're talking how they've released it and how they do, that's what's built into the code of conduct, now that's the. Previous one, twenty-three, twenty-four, cause we don't have twenty-four, twenty-five because of this kind of thing, yeah.
So do you think we, it would make sense to reference? The building level policy by reviewing the code of conduct? Or can we assume that?
Or. Maybe, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say, uh, reference the code of conduct. Limit, if you eliminated that big paragraph. Refer to the code of conduct, uh, the building code of conduct. That would cover that, one thing I've learned is an overaccumbence of policy and wording is more restrictive. Than not having enough necessarily. Uh. So. Seeing that it's already spelled out in the code of conduct, we're.
We just need two sentences.
Yes.
We just need two sentences, pretty much satisfied.
Okay. So scratch that.
Is that okay, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah.
Well, that.
It's a compromise, I mean, I I just. I mean, just anytime you, I mean, it's like a, you know, when you reference and that's reference has to be updated, and I mean, I I think it's implied that. You know, the code of conduct. Comes into play in all policies, basically.
Yeah.
And it can change with building level administration too, change in building. Administration.
And that's something I felt like the board wanted to do was put that um, authorization in the building level leader's hands, um. I mean, do you guys think that's fair?
That had been the purpose of doing.
Right, yeah, so I think that code, um, just being able to recommend.
They'd be a smart idea.
Without a saying like. Principals can decide, right, cause it's it's more of, the code of conduct might be in conjunction with you all. Super system, right, like working on it, so I think that is. Okay, um. But so what about the front page? Any of these that? You wanna take out, John?
Just the uh, confidentiality. The second to the last one. Students have no expectation, I don't just know how we. I just think that's wrong.
Yeah, it just doesn't sit right, I think, where it's at either, like.
I mean, it has nothing to do with the policy.
I again would go back to the code of conduct for those, because there, that is so. Biding restrictive, the way that that's worded right there, that's just from my, from my experiences, uh. Uh. I like it to the surprise issue, so.
Well, and I know. Previously, I, I'm not, I'm not aware of anything, any changes that may have come about in the last five years, but. As a building level administrator, you couldn't even look at that phone legally.
Right.
Without consent of the owner, who is not the student most of the time, it's the adult that owns the phone, so you had to be very careful with that too, so. Uh, as far as being confidential, I mean. Uh, you can't force the kid to show you what's on their phone. At least you. Didn't.
Cause there's been incidents where we've overstuffed. Um, kind of in legal matters, and I I think we need to, this, to me, this feeds that narrative, and so I think to take it out, we're well served.
And then take out that first paragraph on the second page.
I've got a question on what we're just talking about as far as the confidentiality, and I'm going to get back to my law and order days watching on T V where. The police might come in for some investigation. With something, and they confiscate all the phones. Is that saying, is that what that's talking about, that if there's a need? For the authorities to come in and do some type of investigation? That they could very well take those phones and nothing's confidential, they could search for. Whatever they're looking for.
I think the legal matters are separate from the school matters. So I, and I guess I assumed that this was regardless like for school matters, that stuff would be, there's no expectation of confidentiality. But for Aaron, he can get a warrant and look at anything.
I would have to get a warrant, I, I mean, it's, cause I've got the higher standard.
I should say police.
But yeah.
Just.
It's just got the higher standard, but I feel that, you know. I'm covered to an extent. The school corporation isn't. And John Doe, teacher, principal, uh, tell, give me your phone, I'm gonna look in it, do that, so many violations right there. If I, in the course of an investigation, say, I wanna see your phone. Uh. I better have a search warrant unless that person willfully says, here, here, I'm gonna open it up for you, you can look at. But if it's somebody of the age of eighteen, there's likelihood that that phone and the billing of that phone isn't being paid for by a parent, so. The person that that student may be the one who possesses it, but that parent who pays for it is the actual owner of the phone. And that student cannot give me consent to look at that phone. The parent can, and if the parent doesn't want me to, and I still need to get in that phone, I've gotta go through, I can confiscate it, but I've gotta go through a search warrant.
Okay, so, alright, so this is. It's not.
So Stacy, is there any reason that you can think of why we would need to keep that line, I mean, you know?
We're talking about the um.
Students shall have no expectation of confidentiality.
Yes. I've, I mean. It. Really, there's no confidentiality if any student, anything, you know, their locker, we can look at their locker, inside their locker anytime that we want for any reason. So I think it's probably a little redundant.
Okay.
Yep. It's not a lead up. They look by non-credit, it's a different.
Kim, what was the one that you were moving?
Um, the first paragraph on the second page. It just references how, you know. Don't use the phone to threaten, humiliate.
I feel like that probably goes towards the code of conduct also. Don't hope we need to be saying. What not to do with the phone? From a high level? No, are you talking about the very last?
No, sorry, second page, brush my chest, students.
Are you using the same materials from you?
It's been a prohibitive from using a P D C to capture for transinformation, that's a cheat.
Sorry, no. No, that's alright. No wonder, yeah, uh, the last, students may not. Yeah, use it, okay, okay. Sorry, got it, go ahead, so. You're just feeling like.
Um, it just references like the same.
Are we to be telling them what they can and can't use the phone for, or does that fall under? The code of conduct, it also references the bullying and other forms.
I'll make sure that we're in that first paragraph. Second page.
Sorry, I was looking at an old copy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, my bad.
So does the. Oh, go ahead, John.
No, I I I'd be happy to take it out, but. I guess, given the. Bullying is so much, I guess bullying and cheating, you could say, which is worse, but but I think, I don't know, I I can be persuaded to leave it in.
Okay.
But if you wanted to take it out, I had no problem, cause like, once again, I think it's covered in other, in the code of.
I do, I don't, I could go either way, I'd cheat on it, what do you guys think?
I like keeping it in.
Okay.
I know I'm not a board member, but I agree with you, the more they hear, the more they. Because it's more natural for them to, I don't know, it's not natural, but it's. The more they hear, the better off they.
It says we're serious about that, it's in all of our policies, all of our code of conduct.
And it really.
And then I'm assuming that next little one, students are prohibited from using P C D to capture test information. Et cetera, leave that in.
I I cut that.
Do we have? Like cheating, taking pictures of tests anywhere else?
That right there comes directly from the Department of Education, to be honest, as far as testing is, they're pretty.
Pretty strict.
Yeah, you, I have to submit, as the corporation test coordinator, I have to submit. Um, a document to the Department of Education for every individual who will be in a testing environment with, if I saw a student with diabetes, diabetes or for whatever reason. He's in the room, uh, the D O E is pretty strict on that, so.
So.
It's in that testing protocols, and I don't know if it's in the code of conduct, but all testing coordinators at the school sites have that documented.
All state testing is proper, correct?
Yes, so maybe I could see leaving it in, just if something happened, and then us needing to.
Reference.
Show where it was referenced.
It offers us protection.
Yeah.
Uh, for any allegations of uh. It it offers protection, I see leaving it in there. If God forbid, something should have to stay, could you tell me that? In your policy, well, we don't have that in our policy, well, the Department of Education has it in a policy, it goes out to everybody, but you don't have it in your policy. Uh, cha-ching, so.
Yeah. Um, and I'm assuming that next one can stay in. You know. It's a privilege, or did you say you wanted to?
I like that.
Okay. Um.
I think the bomb will be up.
Yeah.
All over, press.
And then later in that last line, the parents and guardians are advised the best way.
So there you get.
The office.
I don't know, I mean, that one, there's lots of complaints, people call in and they get the phone tree, or they get, I mean, I don't know, I. I'm not saying we take it out or do anything, but I think we need a better system, if we're gonna tell people they have to call and they correct them, they can. I don't know what the system might be, but.
Coming to the building?
Yeah.
Comes at the building?
But that didn't work either. And a problem. And you just in this age, I mean, I don't know, that's.
I mean, as a parent, I will say I still. Text my high schooler, because I know he'll. See it eventually.
Yeah.
But that's usually like a change, like a change of plans, or, you know. But I would never call the office. To give him a change of plans.
I'm good for sleeping it in.
Yeah, I'm getting, and maybe there's, I mean, I'm guessing it's a rare occurrence, Stacy, and that you can. I mean, how many parents call in for messages with their students daily?
It happens a lot.
So how much of a strain is that on our?
Um, well, you were.
We had, Charles, uh. And I think Eric goes, no, we had um, basically just like a memo pads, and so we'd have to do like a duplicate copy, basically to show that, you know, we. Did, you know, go to the teacher's room at a certain time, um, you know, I think we.
Documentation.
Documentation that we did give it in the teacher, it's different elementary than high school, cause um.
And I would say K through eight, it would be that way, because they're not, they don't have their phones, and that's, that's the. The expectation is their phone is away for the day, so parents wouldn't be able to change the plans with their seventh, eighth grader, be it a text message, they'd have to.
Call and.
Call in the office.
I'm the favorite. But they, I mean, that is.
But also, I mean. My elementary kids, they have class dojo, so I. So there are other ways, I think, too.
Teachers can ask to be.
Teachers directly then as well.
Yeah, some do.
Parents can, yeah, they can email.
Parents square.
Yeah.
Parents squares, class dojo.
What's the expectation for teachers to, to be logged in or to check that?
None.
Barely or.
We just ask them to respond within twenty-four hours.
And most of them will say, if you send me a message, I might not get it, so please also follow this, but. I know I do it, it's just a question, but.
I can, I can, I can say it does work, because I do have a person in Charles, um, and my teachers are very responsive.
Um, and my teachers are very responsive, and they, even if we need to change to the car rider line, I mean, it's on it.
Yeah.
So I mean, it does work, I.
Oh, I, I just think it's, once again, it's, it, that's not helping us educate kids per se, it's, it's an added cost to our system. I mean, to have the secretaries running notes and have the teachers replying to dojos, I mean, that's not what they're, we want them to be doing. I understand why they're doing it, and I think it's important that they do it, but, you know, all these little pieces. Take away from educating a kid. Technology, all.
Technology.
Technology.
You know, of course, you know, when I was in school, uh, we were in huts, and so. So we hadn't created anything other than a chisel and stone to deliver messages. In all seriousness, but, but. It was a time when kids were sent to school to learn, there was no interruption in the class unless it was of a critical. Need, uh, parents didn't just call the school and say, hey, you know, would you tell my little Johnny that I'm gonna be late picking him up? No, little Johnny knew that if you weren't there by quarter after, little Johnny was walking home. And so, but now it's every little thing. I know a lot of teachers that have it, that will let the parents know that if you do email me or however. Uh, they, the parent attempts to contact, and if I have not responded back to you within twenty minutes, please call the central. Or the main office of the building, uh, because I may be unavailable at the time that you send me this, so, yeah.
So where are we wanting to land? I feel like it kind of serves as a reminder, but I also feel like it could be kind of superfluous. So.
I like keeping it in.
Yeah. I mean, that's what we expect them to do, is to call the school, I mean, that's what we prefer. Instead of entering, we prefer them to call the school than the teacher, actually, I believe.
So what is the cost to, I'm, what is the cost to have parents square or dojo for the school? Can we find that out?
Dojos are free.
Dojos free, dojo is free, okay, so what was parents square?
Parents square is built into.
Title.
Title line.
Be- because we use it all the way across the board. Even per to protect your staff like. District is saying you have. So that's simply parent directed messaging here, you know what I mean, so everybody pays for something.
Okay.
Okay. Let's get to supplemental, no. Let's get to ask a really quick evaluation of the superintendent. Well, forty. Um. I guess I've seen the, I listen, put it in, because we had started that new, well. Slightly new. Superintendent evaluation, so I watched this, uh. Webinar from ISBA for just the new rubric that they rolled out and processes, so. And he mentioned, oh, review your evaluation of superintendent policies. Um, I read through, it's pretty standard, I just thought it would be a good time, since we have a. Check in for Dr. Wright's evaluation on the eighth, to just look at this one and go through if we wanna. And add change, but. To me, it's pretty, pretty standard, there's nothing that locks us in on dates, um, we set those anyway. Um, in June, there are some things which we talked about on the eighth about. So. Quote of poetry and items that we do need to bake into that evaluation, but. Other than that, does anyone have any questions on this one?
Um, since you brought it to it.
Let's be easy one, John.
You know me. Um, I don't know, like on the outcome of the evaluation, determine the superintendent salary, you blocked him into an evergreen. Contract, so I don't know, that seems to have, be a moot point, that has nothing to do with the evaluation now.
Well, true, but I read it as. We're doing these check ins, right, to judge on the advis- able, advisability of retention. I mean, we still have the authority to. Not renew, even though it's in an evergreen, or has ever read clause. So that's kind of how I.
Okay, I mean, that's, I just, I think we, we did ourselves a disservice with that contract, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Well, we should leave this line in there then, so when we get there, to revisit. Does anybody else have any thoughts? Something, thank you.
Right, back.
Oh, keep going, John's.
It's a reading.
John's still reading.
I mean, so. And intrigued by the line D, improve its own performance as a public body ultimately in charge with education. I'm guessing that is the board, right?
Yeah.
I don't know what that looks like, per se.
So. I mean, I do like it, I, you know, it's under sentence out of, of the evaluation. And with superintendent's performance, right? It does help us improve our own performance, because. Right, if we take it to the basic level of, we're his manager, right, we have to be good stewards, we have to. That's how I read that line, it. We also do the board. We should have, we'll do on board evaluations as well, so.
I mean, yeah, I, I guess, it, it, it seems like we should, well, if this isn't the policy, and if we're gonna. If it's an outcome of the performance and immediate following his evaluation, we would do the board work. And I've never, I guess, seen those kind of put together like that, but I like it, I mean, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, so we, you guys did one right before I started, I think, but I know, we haven't done one. Like, okay.
So we should probably do one, this.
Yeah.
Oh, you think after?
Well, I mean, that's the policy. We can do one before then, but.
Or do.
It's an outcome of the evaluation, you wait till the evaluation is complete.
Well, I think, since this is sort of a weird, like, we could do it at any point.
Oh, yeah.
And then, I think we should set that in June, when we set the next year's schedules for the superintendent evaluation of our. So then we, you know, also have something.
That way, while we're evaluating him or her, we're also evaluating ourselves and making sure that, again, going back to. We're living up to our responsibilities as stewards and the supervisors.
As you know, I'm very literal, and as it says outcome, then, you know, but I, I agree with the ongoing improvement.
Where's the outcome? It's the bottom.
The, the outcome of the evaluation, that has P C T.
It's under.
Thank you. Um, but I could say as a component. We're wanting to change that. Does that make sense? Cause you're right, John, outcome is as a result of, or something that comes forth from an evaluation. Where a component would just be part of.
Yeah. I've been asked this question, yes.
Up to the top, move it, evaluation should include an assessment, and just move the performance of the.
Oh, that D to the.
It's part of the evaluation process, rather than an outcome of it.
Well, again, outcome as opposed to.
Aren't you glad you came, Austin?
If you say. If you say. I think we restrict ourselves time wise, or create a burden time, just because if, if we're done with his. Yet we're not done with ours, and it's components of his, but we haven't done ours, then it adds a different timeframe.
I'm content as it is.
Why would you say, can we add that as E under the such av- such evaluation shall include, include an assessment of? On the first page, and then we move that. So basically, we are also assessing our own performance. Instead of having it as outcome.
John, if you're good with it, as, I like it as.
Keeping it.
Not a game.
Yeah, I might add one, I mean.
Okay.
And maybe this was before I walked in, but.
Isn't that a song by the Eagles?
Was.
So.
Um. This, we've got a streamline, and do better, with, in my opinion, the, the timing of it. Like, and maybe that was discussed earlier, but, uh.
I think that's all the work Kim's been doing.
Yeah, and then that's, I had done the last little webinar from ISBA.
Okay.
So, and this year obviously was just a hot mess with timing, so on the eighth, we'll discuss that a little more. And well, really, there's several dates we have to lock down and be consistent with every year, so, yes.
I agree. We tend to have, yeah, it needs to happen, and then we have to have our periodic quarterly check-ins, period.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so, moving on, um. Sorry, we're gonna go to. Supplemental payments for teachers, I know it's skipping around, but. Did we have concerns on that? Last week. Who didn't?
I don't think so.
I have a quick question to answer. Um, I wasn't sure what the purpose of supplemental payments for teachers was. It's not extra due assignments, it's not a one-time stipend when you're hiring somebody in a difficult to fill position. So I wasn't clear what that means.
Stacy, could you address that?
Yeah, so supplemental, uh, the state legislature started that, I. At least a couple of years ago, that they have given, um, the, um, ability to, um. Pay supplemental, to pay teachers, uh, the, the school district can pay, give teachers a supplemental payment. For anything that they felt like was important, and so they, we actually did that a couple of years ago. Um, and, um. And that's still being contested a little bit, but, um.
So for instance, if you have like a hard to fill job, right, like speech teacher.
She said that's that one time page that we did. When we tried to readjust the salary schedule, correct.
So, does this mean it would be for all teachers, not just for a few teachers?
No, I think this, this means that, so, so we are having, it, it, there's still some. Some, um, teachers that are in hard to fill positions, there's still some of those, and so we can offer the one. But, um, you know, it's, then you, this might prevent teachers from, this is just an example that I can think of. It's not anything that we intend to do or anything else, but you could have teachers that, that start doing, uh, you know, job jumping. And so, you know, they might get hired, we might give them a, a one year, uh, that initial hard to fill, um, stipend, and then. Well, I'm not getting that money anymore, so I'll, I'll go to this school district and they'll give it to me, and school districts are so desperate now to fill some of those positions. That I, I think that this might help eliminate some of that, that if they are in a, in a very difficult to fill. Um, category, that this gives the superintendent the o- opportunity to, to offer that more often.
Oh, this one too, I was, uh, this one doesn't have the options, but that's, we were questioning.
Why it wasn't the first one?
Yeah, so we have gotten this, is this the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, um, so option one was. Says, please select one of the following options, option one was, school board authorizes the superintendent to use a supplemental payment. Um, basically that first sentence. Uh, option two breaks down. A through S, right, where it's like. A teacher who is needed to fill up to begin, a teacher who has obtained required literacy endorsement, which I think it said might be showing away.
That, well, yeah, so they give it, so that would be an opportunity, another opportunity to, um. For teachers that have that reading endorsement, that right now is not required, but it will be, um, I think in twenty-seven. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, that it will be required, and so it gives an opportunity for those teachers also that, um, receive those extra endorsements that. Um, that we can, um. Give them a benefit for doing those, going that extra mile to do those things.
So the basic question is, do we wanna go option A, which is like, we give, we authorize the superintendent. To give any of those, these supplemental payments, or option two is breaks down exactly which type of payments we give.
I don't think we have.
I know, she can print it off real quick and get it to you, if you would like her to do that.
Yeah, can you?
She can pull it up right now.
Well, just go ahead and read those options again, cause you were asking a question, I mean, may, may be just as time efficient.
Yeah, so, uh, a, a teacher who is needed to fill a position in a corporation. A teacher who has obtained a required literacy endorsement, a teacher who teaches an advanced placement course, or has earned a master's degree. Um, blah, 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 related to subject matter of dual credit course or another course. Uh, D, a teacher who is a special education professional, or teaches in the areas of science, technology, engineering, or mathematics. E, an elementary school teacher who earns a master's degree in math, reading, or literacy. S, a teacher who teaches a career or technical education course, and then, or we can actually write in. What we would want to give it for. So it's like, well, we're afforded to give it for whatever, or is the board want to.
I think we still have to approve.
Thank you.
Um, let's say, doctor, doctor, the superintendent wants to give supplemental statements to you.
Weber.
Weber, yeah, um, it's still, that still comes before the board for approval, correct Stacy?
Yes.
So we would have a chance to input.
Yeah, so, but I didn't know if. If it's something that we wanted to call out, so that it can be advertised, advertised for the teachers? Do they know what they get additional supplemental payments for, or can?
Yeah, it's a can, uh.
I mean, yeah, like, do we communicate that? It, can it change from year to year?
I prefer not listing, because I, I don't know what the features.
I would want to know, yeah, as our H R professional, would you feel like, um, someone might be coming in. Waving our policy, saying, it looks like you owe me some more money here, or.
I think option one, um, once again, I think this is what, uh, board member Weber was saying, that, um. You never know what's gonna come up, and, and if something comes up that's not on that list, that, you know, we didn't know about, then that would. Force you to change the policy before you could reward a teacher, um, with that, so I think that this leaves it up to you more. Uh, to be able.
Option one leaves it open ended.
The way I see it, that's.
I'm okay with option one, my only, my other question would be, the way it reads. Um, that, you know, we can give a payment in excess of the salary specified in the school. Corporation's compensation plan to any teacher at the discretion of the superintendent, so, let's say we had a. Something for a literacy endorsement, do all the teachers with that get it? Cause to me, it reads, this could be like, oh, hey, you have a literacy endorsement, I'm gonna give it to you. Because of, does that get us in trouble, or do we review as a corporation that?
I think it.
You don't want to give it to us, I know, but you don't wanna give it to one and not, yeah.
That's how you parse them out.
They might say. A literacy door.
But if you, let's say we need A three literacy people, not, you know, I mean, I mean, I think you can get pretty. I mean, I don't know, I, I did, I think limiting ourselves, cause like, I don't know, if we have this policy option two. I don't know if that would have allowed us to do the retention adjustments.
I'm not saying we limit it, but I just wanna make sure that. I'm not saying we limit it, but I just wanna make sure that, hey, for this whole year. This is what we're looking for, so you have this, Erica, were you gonna talk?
Yeah, um, I'm having a, a twenty-five year history with the corporation, which is now four years old. Been away that long, I know how many times teachers felt hurt. And then angry about monetary decisions that were made that felt inequitable. And often they were decisions that were made with the best intentions in the world, having no idea that people would feel hurt by them. Um, but a lot of emotion came up around it. The third option is to negotiate with the union about compensation, so. I, I looked at the most recent contract and in the most recent contract, it was agreed that yes, you can. Give up to three thousand dollars extra for hiring people for hard to fill positions and I understand the problem about job hopping and wanting to hold on to people. But a lot of resentment can be incurred if you say, I wanna hold on to you, I'm gonna give you extra money. But the other people in your building who are working just as hard as you aren't gonna get that extra money. It can cause a lot of dissension and a lot of unhappiness.
But would those people be in hard to fill positions or no?
Um, well.
Best incentivize for a hard to fill position, so. If they're not, I guess the way I would look at it is that they're not in a hard to fill position.
And, and you know, sometimes people get angry and upset, then leave the corporation and go elsewhere. Not even necessarily for more money, but what feels to them like more respect.
Yeah, I, I get that, it just, I would say from, you're in a hard to fill position. I don't see a problem with that being the board.
I think that, the argument is, I deal with this is, last year that wasn't hard to fill, so you came in.
Right.
Transferred into that role, now we're seeing a deficit. They see that coming, so, I mean, this, I think. I think for the board option one, but I went once to wanna know. How did we, like, are we publicizing those things that we need something, like at what point? I don't know if you play a role without Dr. Wright of, you're seeing like, hey, we need to look at. This specific role or.
Yeah, so uh, when we, when we do those, those one-time supplemental payments for, for hard to go position. Um, you know, the principals don't offer that, we, that is ultimately Dr. Wright, you know, we go to him and we say. We have this position that is really gets called, it's been posted for two months and we've had. No applicants, but we finally got one, um, so that might be an example, but it would be ultimately his decision, it's not any mass decision.
Yes.
As far as in this building.
Yes, any other things?
I think it's always, I mean, I know we have the last contract, our senior teachers were shut out and that created a lot of problems. Um, what we did, the adjustments, I mean, you're trying to adjust the pay scale to make it more linear, I guess. And that created problems, uh, so I mean, you're, we're in a know when. Anytime you're handing out resources and it's somewhat unequal, so maybe equitable matter, then. You're gonna ruffle feathers.
My thing too, it's the, the process and maybe this, this is a question we can bring up to Dr. Wright of. What's the process, because that's part of it, right, if we. See, we need to fulfill, how are we?
Is it one time?
It's one time.
It's a one time.
Do we talk to the union about it, do, does the building, and I'm not turning this off, so it's just. Would like to know what.
Policy says he has to. Must be held, so a discussion of the supplement must be held with the exclusive representative of corporations teacher.
But discussion is very different from bargaining.
Exactly.
All you have to do is let them know, this is what we're doing.
Right.
And they can tell you how they feel, but it doesn't necessarily impact decisions.
And there also might be positions that are not um, part of the bargaining unit that this might apply to, I'm thinking of like speech. Language pathologists or our school psychologists, so it's not.
Yeah. Now, Erica, I appreciate you reminding us of, yeah, cause that is true, but it's, it's also true what John's saying of. It's like we can't. I guess Austin, you were saying that, it's like.
So, not gonna make everyone happy.
Or what, yeah, what do we lay down then, you guys? Option one, yeah, I think it's option one, but I do think it's just a good question to keep in mind.
On, on a, on a different subject, Stacy, do we know how many of our teachers from elementary to middle school to high school? Who have master's degrees, who have these types of?
Oh yeah, we, and, and there are, um, there are bumps in pay for education. So if you have a masters, you get a little bump, if you have a masters in third, you get a little bump, masters instead, and you know.
Did you get a personal score yet?
No.
Okay, who probably needs.
Yeah, it's.
In my time on the board, we've had a proliferation of ECAs, I mean, there are, I mean, every month, there's. You know, lead this instructor, lead, you know, team and, which is fine. But we are funneling a lot of dollars uh, into certain teachers that can fulfill other roles in the corporation that I think is. I would say in the last decade is, is a change, that we've not maybe done so much, that either, that is, that expected. Teachers to just do, maybe, and so now we're maybe paying a little bit for those services.
And those ECA, they're all Morgan.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So we'll have option one for you at the next board meeting.
Yeah. Okay, let's look at, we have a whistleblower, I think it was just to make sure that the two policies match. I did see. I'm thirty-two eleven in that second. Ergaph, we decided instead of it saying within a reasonable time, it should say seventy-two hours.
And, and we kind of brought that back, um, we did because we had kind of a question on it, wanted to make sure the board, um. Um, was where that, so reasonable time, so for example, when somebody requests, um, there's a records request. It says reasonable time too, because reasonable time can, it's so vary and on so many things, so if you. If you put in seventy-two hours, it's seventy-two business hours, it's seventy-two hours. Um, you know, calendar hours or, um, for example, we had, um. What's the example you gave, gave me today when we were talking about?
If you want.
Oh yeah, so like if we have a cyber attack, then that, you know, then the reasonable timeframe is, is a little different. Um, and so I don't know if there's a, if there's a legal term for reasonable hours, you know, if they, I don't know. So, but I mean, we're willing to put in whatever you want, but we just thought, you might wanna think about that. Again, I don't know.
Well, my example is gonna be a situation that occurs on a Friday afternoon, uh, and there's no school on Monday. Uh, or something else where no administrators available to report to until the following Tuesday, now you've gone beyond the seventy-two hour. Uh, timeframe, reasonable time in a legal perspective is within a reasonable time where. It can be reported to those authorities that it has to be reported to or, or so.
And I think in the situation as well, for example, if, if I'm a building level administrator and I have somebody report something to me that puts a child in harm. That reasonable time is two minutes, I mean, it's not, that's my reasonable time, but if it's something else. You know, that um, that can be extended a little bit, then that would go farther down the list, so, um. So yeah, so we didn't know if you wanted to read this back or not.
No, I get that, um, and that makes sense.
And it's not something I thought of when we first.
Yeah, cause I was just looking at it from a response time, like if I brought something up to my manager, not urgent. That, what is the timeframe before, then I could go to you or go to Dr. Wright. But that may get a little.
You could take three business days, but I'm comfortable with reasonable time.
But that does make sense to me, kind of, move it back to.
Thank you.
You guys have thoughts?
I'm good with reasonable time.
Changing it back.
I want.
Yeah, you wanna.
Operates better with more definiteness.
Well, if I, if the will of the.
Yeah.
Not to exceed.
Well, that's where I was coming from, if I have a manager, you know, I have to, that's a little chain of command, but. I don't get along with my manager either, it just creates. Like how, then I, as an employee, I wanna go be like, it's been three days, something else has gone back to me, if you're upset or. That's why I was looking at a timeframe.
Well, but then I think if, you know, if, if me as the person that's, that's giving that complaint. If I feel like reasonable time is, then I can step it up to the next person up and start working my way up that chain.
That's it.
And then, me as a building administrator, if I know that, then. You know, I'm gonna try to figure out what Kim's reasonable time is and I would definitely wanna get to her before that reasonable times up, because there's no way that I want them to come to Sam.
That's true.
Reasonable time now to exceed. X amount of hours.
For three businesses. Or is that two?
I mean, if I could just say Monday morning, I would expect an answer Wednesday, if I have a complaint Thursday.
And that's what we would expect.
I think that's where the waters are muddied with reasonable time, I mean.
You know, I could go.
Somebody might not think that that, you know. Might not think it's as big of a deal, so they wait, which is not okay, but. Says reasonable time, I thought that was reasonable, right?
Yeah, it's very up to interpretation.
Yeah, so I'm more with Nicole, I'd rather have a definite.
If you're gonna do a, do a business. Business days, you can't just.
You lose your holidays.
Can we say a reasonable time up to three business days, three working days?
I would embrace a, a reasonable time at that point and just say within three business days. Or what, however much we've, does that, does that seem like a good amount of time?
Not to exceed, I mean, like, not, yeah, like, uh, this is.
Not to exceed.
Also saying, if there's something, you know, child is in danger or something, you don't wanna like.
Right, business days for that.
Not to exceed.
Right, so then you would leave in the reasonable time. Not to exceed three business days.
I was suggesting take out a reasonable time, but I'm also fine with.
It just, I, I don't know how you word that and then put in not to exceed.
Right, that does.
Does not respond within not to exceed three business days or I don't.
It's, I'd leave in reasonable time not to exceed because. The building level leader should also be, if someone's bringing a concern, that should be part of the conversation too. I will follow up in, right?
Yeah, um, so it either be, does that, okay, immediate supervisor does not respond within three business days. We'd either say that or does not respond within a reasonable time not to exceed three business days. So those are kind of the two.
I like the second option.
A rea- reasonable time not to exceed three business.
I have trigger policies and non-trigger policies, this is a non-trigger.
Okay, the other thing. One other thing about this one, which I think he's parking on, is having HR referenced in this. Which I think you brought up to you, Stacy, I pulled up my company's. It's under reporting concerns and investigation policy, but they just sort of have them itemized, like. The direct supervisor, uh, department head, department might be first, building level leader. Um, human resources superintendent, I, I really feel like we should. Highlight those. Instead of like, yeah, they, it references to go to their. Immediate supervisor, I think.
Just wanna lay out the chain of command, I would change.
Just that, the, yes. Because a lot of people don't.
Know where to go.
They don't know where to go if. They're having a situation. You know, I just feel like, it gives them permission to. Search out the resources that they want, which is what we want to do in a whistleblower policy, it's not about just go to your media.
Cause if it involves your media, then you have to.
So I guess, so I guess. In the line that we just were working, it's the same line, so not to exceed three business days or the, um. Days, or the immediate supervisor is the officer employee, those whose words or actions are in question, the employee may make the report required by this policy. To the office of human resources or the superintendent, is that what you want, or?
I don't know if necessarily it says superintendent, but it could say human.
Right now it says the superintendent, the superintendent, so do you want me to put?
And human, and or human resources. Does anybody else have a thought?
I mean, it takes a little bit off his plate, I don't.
I just feel it's, I, as an employee, I would think too, like, I'm not going to my CEO. To report something.
That seemed like you're gonna tell me a death time five right away.
Right, like.
Okay, so why connect that link?
Yeah, you're the neutral party in this, that's kind of what I want to add.
Level red. I didn't get my.
We're going to level helping hands.
So you get grooming and.
Darn HR people. We're not all fluffy rainbows, Josh. Okay, so, um.
I still think on that one, we had a, you know, some sort of, so hotline to the opposite.
Yeah.
The HR would provide that though, maybe?
And maybe even our EAP.
So I think we talked about.
I mean, just something that's completely confidential gives people a little bit more.
My company has an alert line, I think they set it up on their own or. A Google form or.
Who's?
Or if Alex could set up, just anonymous.
These are your concerns.
I mean, I think it's hard too. But that might be a. Just item to bring up that we need, kind of. Not necessarily for the policy, but for the strategy. I'm making it out just to have that. Are you okay with that, Austin?
Yeah.
Okay, last one. Anonymous tip one, anonymous, yeah, just we, I think you had mentioned, like, maybe it's something we can ask Alex about. Um, or having a anonymous form over that people could, that was known, probably to Stacy. So. And then, and then the last two, we just talked about, we're like, we're moving to the fun one.
Yeah, the hard, is there a hard eleven point, stop time?
It's, I was sitting at eleven, but this one.
It's my heart. So my staff.
And I didn't, I haven't.
Well, the goal was to maybe have all three of these look the same, right?
Yes, so I have Cindy, I printed out the staff ethics and the pool trainer ethics also. So then when I saw those, I was like, well, ours is twice as. And the admin and staff, it took, to me, it's like, it's a different approach. To ethics. So I haven't printed out, so we just look at them in conjunction, maybe if you guys have to go, that is totally fine. To kind of just. Look at them and, oh, I see. You didn't get a copy of, um, we went through last meeting and just highlighted what was enough, they came up with this. Guide, you know, and kind of forgot to separate things out, um. So I guess my, so my question. For this is, do we want these very similar, I know they're different items. But should they have some of the same? Ethics on them, I think some on ours, I would think should be on the other two, and they're reported slightly differently. Ethics on them, because I think some on ours, I would think should be on the other two, and they're reported slightly different.
I would like them all to be the same. Actually, I think. I don't see, I don't see any difference for one.
I assume.
We're elected officials, we take a oath.
Yeah.
The administrator, administrators are, I mean, that's a different level, but I, I have the same expectation of all, all three. Teachers, teachers, instructors, support.
Yeah. Cause when I pulled it, and I just did this yesterday, I just assumed they were almost more similar. But they're not. So, Austin, what's your thoughts on, do you want them all to be similar to each other? Mike.
I would prefer.
Here, sorry, sorry, I had a side question, no.
Oh, yeah.
Please forget, may I go in? It's my vacation day often, I'm spending half of my.
Well, technically, they have to take vacations without them, you don't have to take vacations.
Nice union, revise work for getting paid eight. Sorry.
No, so. So, what are your thoughts, do you think these three should be similar, or at least?
Similar, yes, definitely, I think there's definitely crossover, um, I do think though. That there's differentiation in some regard, because as John said, we are elected officials. Not all of us all the time, you know, depending on if there have been vacancies, but the idea is, um.
We take a oath, which is our additional thing, I mean, no one else takes an oath in the corporation.
Our, um, our roles are different too, though, that's the other thing, um, that I see as a differentiator. So, yes, I think there should be a lot of crossover, but, um. If there are role-specific things that should be addressed, then there might be.
Yeah, no, I totally get that, yeah, I was, like, just a, option A on, or. Line item A on staff ethics is recognize basic dignities of all individuals within the interact. In the performance of duties, you know, and then ours is thinking always in terms of children first. You know, like. Would, both of those things could be on either policy, it just seems like it's. Completely different, so I think just streamlining them. Uh. Would make more sense. Because, yeah, ours does have, you know.
Cause like, A, I think we could adopt. Maybe even in lieu of our current A. I think that would make sense, you know.
Yep.
And then B, though, represent accurately their qualifications, um, I don't know that that's as applicable to. What we are doing, I mean.
But that's something to represent.
But only if you have appointed members, if they land a resume, we would expect them to.
Yeah, yeah.
We appoint, we appoint a lot of members, Mike.
But how do you represent accurately your qualifications, right, you have qualifications.
Thanks for pointing that out, John.
Did I say?
You have qualifications or you don't, right, representing them accurate, you mean recording them accurately, like, that's a different thing, I mean, we.
That you represent.
We could put that on ours, but I could represent much better qualifications than I actually have.
And yeah, I, I think anything we would add to ours. Um, that might be specific, as Nicole was saying, we could really add to the other two, and then we would still have one pilot, one's. When ethics policy, I mean, if everything is not, not acutely directed towards those three groups. The policy, a, a single uniform policy could work for all three groups, if that makes sense.
I think so too. So maybe what we would do is have like the admin, the ethics, the staff ethics and the board ethics, kind of like a core ethics policy. And then have underlying additional like, okay, and then board-specific ethics, um.
Yeah.
No?
Have one policy for all, and if they're board-specific, like, I don't know what would be refusing to play politics, if you think that's important, which I don't think it is. Then that, if that's in the staff policy, if that's in the staff policy. I don't know, that doesn't hurt anything, I guess.
I think it hurts to have superfluous things, it doesn't make sense to have some things.
I think we have two pages of notes and the other ones are half a page. So I think there's a lot of superbolism in this that we don't need.
Well, I think, kind of talked about last time, the board beliefs, and then, so maybe some of the board-specific things gets moved into. Something else like that, to really like differentiate, like something that. Could get you in trouble or something that, you know. We believe in, you know, not putting.
Sorry, yeah, one thing, my recycling on the back is, uh. My kids stole my, use all my printer paper.
Kitchen recycling.
It's just, it's just add them up. Let's see, nothing private, or confidential. That's just how it feels. No, I have to check, um, but anyway, I mean, I just think that these three are something we kind of take in, if you guys, you know, in all your free time. Uh, maybe just think about how we construction goes a little better, what that looks like.
It's where we stand with the markings we made at the last meeting on this particular policy.
I don't know. Now seeing these two, I wanna, like, it makes me wanna. I mean, I've always wanted to shrink it down, condense it, um. But. What are your thoughts?
No, I just, I mean, I thought we spent quite a bit of time going through these, determining what was maybe ethics and guidelines and policies and then striking some out.
We could use the board member one as the template for the other two then. You can do that way. Cause I believe. Staff should have way more, but that might be.
Staff should have what?
More to.
Staff should have more in their, gotcha, but Stacy, they have a, there's a handbook for staff, right?
I need to look at that.
They need to be.
If that's something you do, okay. Does that come to the board at all? Okay. Because also, this could be reference staff more in their handbook or. Any other thoughts on this? Is everyone okay if we kind of? Sit on these and maybe take the board member ethics as a template? Just to, it's like even just making the sentences.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, like, so then you could read it.
A lot of like odds.
Yeah. Cause I look at it like.
Fairy tale.
I wanna read a line in staff ethics that I could also find in board ethics, so admin ethics.
Yeah.
So are you deciding to leave them all separate or?
I think we need a street one, yeah.
Green light each.
I think we'll review all three is what we're gonna end up doing, because we have to have one. Right, Stacy, we have to have the three hundred series, the thousand.
Right, so they'll say the same, they'll be.
Three similar policies, so yeah, we'll end up reviewing the other two, or possibly altering them.
It's like the same people didn't even write them, but they're the same. Thoughts? Okay, um. Got the last one, yeah. Okay, do you guys have any questions?